Good evening. Mr. Rickaman?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Here.
Mr. Bedura?
Here.
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Mayor Benjamin?
Here. Everyone join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Raymond, would you please give us a word? As far ahead for this day and for the promises you've already granted us, we thank you for this assemblage tonight. We thank you for this city of ours that continues to expand and grow, touching the lives of people everywhere. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Uh, Madam City Manager?
National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month by the Honorable Tamika Isaac Devine. Again, that's the second presentation of the evening. And then for the agenda items, Mr. Mayor and Council, if you would please hold items twenty-seven, thirty-one, and thirty-nine.
Is there a motion to that effect? So move to a second.
Second.
Any discussion with the previous question? Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. City Manager?
We would ask for any public input related to the items on the agenda as outlined. Seeing none, Council is asked to approve the August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, City Council meeting.
Is there a motion? So move to a second. Any discussion with the previous question? Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Council is asked to approve the consent agenda items six through twenty-five.
So move.
Discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to note, I had some calls and I just wanted to, people asking about our purchase of Tahos for police pursuit vehicles. And we, we had an opportunity really to take advantage of getting a much better quality vehicle at a good price, fully outfitted with some updated technology and some things that allow our officers not only to be safer on the road, but also allow them to do their job better. And, um, we really were able to do this without a, really an increase in cost of what we've had to spend previous with sedans, which we're not getting the same type of vehicle. I just wanted to make a note of that so the public knew what we were doing, why we were doing, and how, how it's going to better our officers' ability to do their job, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that note. Mr. Rickaman, um, I would commit to Council that this is the best investment for the safety of the Columbia Police Department.
With the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving into our period of presentations, item twenty-six is Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week from the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Can I ask a question? Um, did I know that at the beginning that there was supposed to be public input? And I actually am having a lot of trouble hearing you. Do you call for that?
I did.
Did you know there was going to be public input?
On which item?
I see, I see three people signed up for the Tahoe's discussions. Is that, is that? Um, abso- absolutely. Please. Yeah, you know, you should come to the microphone. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I was having trouble hearing you. I appreciate it.
There's a three-minute limit, ladies. Three-minute, three-minute, three-minute limit. So please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is E.K. Hoffman, and this is Kate Bowie. We are both residents of Columbia. We would like to express our concern regarding the proposed spending on fifty-three Chevy Tahos and their outfitting for law enforcement use. Totalling over three point three million taxpayer dollars, this allocation of funding is a complete misappropriation of taxpayer money and could be better spent on combating homelessness in Columbia. The total budget for the Columbia Police Department is over forty-two million dollars already, whereas the total funds allocated for all homeless services is only one million dollars. We're spending more money today on Tahos than we are in three years of funding homeless services. We are spending more towards enforcing the criminalization of people experiencing homelessness than we are on direct services to combat homelessness. Our city, like many, has an inflammatory history of anti-homeless rhetoric, action, and legislation. In two thousand thirteen, our city council received national criticism by releasing a plan titled Homeless Emergency Response that gave people experiencing homelessness an ultimatum: go to the emergency shelter or be arrested. Our anti-homelessness legislation and actions continues today with ordinances that criminalize loitering and camping alike. Criminalizing sleeping, resting, and storing personal property make the existence of people experiencing homelessness in public spaces effectively illegal. Criminalizing life-sustaining behaviors such as sleep is cruel and dehumanizing. Anti-homeless laws, policies, and ordinances have a very real impact on the public's perception of people experiencing homelessness. These anti-homeless ordinances send the message that people experiencing homelessness should be kept out of sight and that poverty is shameful rather than a reflection of our culture and our city. These ordinances encourage businesses and individuals to discriminate against poor folks and folks experiencing homelessness. It also removes the responsibility of poverty away from our society and onto the individual, perpetuating the false narrative that one can simply pull themselves up by their bootstraps. And while empathy is key, criminalization ordinances are also incredibly costly to tax- taxpayers. Several studies indicate that providing permanent housing and case management is more effective for solving homelessness while also saving millions of dollars. Columbia has a lack of resources in terms of homeless services, and a large part of that is due to the misappropriation of funds like the police Tahoe's this council is here to discuss today. It is abundantly clear that helping people experiencing homelessness is not a priority for this city. The one million dollar budget is too small, and city officials continue to act against poor folks and in favor of private property and the agendas of businesses, such as the recent example of Councilman Duval's role in the removal of the benches from the Vista and subsequent proposal of replacing...
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
No, I would like to finish. It comes back, please.
Well, with the, if we're talking about the Tahos, they have a separate discussion about homelessness. There's a, there's a point on the agenda to, to have your say about, about, about homelessness in Columbia, which is a, a real and legitimate issue. But if in fact...
May I finish?
Uh, yeah, you, please, please finish. Please.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. So...
But there will be, but there will be an opportunity, if you want to, uh, have a word on homelessness, to still do that and do it probably within the hour, but...
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Um, and I appreciate you letting me finish. Um, so there is a recent example of the removal of the benches in the Vista and the subsequent proposal of replacing them with bench designs that include dividers. This council is prioritizing capital over human lives, and now as we face massive affordable housing crisis, we can expect to see numbers of...
How much longer before you finish? Maybe I should have asked that.
Uh, like a sentence?
Okay, alright.
I'm gonna talk as well about it.
If, if, if we're, if we're talking about the purchase of, 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 of the vehicles...
Well, the reallocation of that money towards providing services.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll have, we'll have the, we'll have the opportunity, um, during citizen input to, to share anything and everything you want to talk about. It can be about law enforcement, it can be about homelessness, it can be about anything else. But, but this, but this...
Can you continue where we left off?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
So you want us to continue where we left off at the end, or, okay?
At the, at the end of the agenda. And, and if we're lucky, that'll be pretty short. Yeah, pretty short.
Okay. I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, um, but I, I do find it disrespectful to be interrupted when I, I did care deeply about this topic and how it relates to the purchase of the Tahoe specifically.
I'm sorry you feel disrespected. We covered that part on the agenda, and you, as you admitted, you missed that part. So we, so we, so we amended the rules to, to allow you to, so I'm not sure how you feel disrespected. But we respect the fact that you feel disrespected. And we'll have more of an opportunity to do so in, in a moment or so.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin.
Thank you.
Moving on to a period of presentations, we are going... What is the subject? If you want to speak directly to that item, then you should have spoken to it before the council voted on it during the public input. But being that you missed that, that's up to the mayor and council. If, that, that would be up to Mr., to the mayor and council as he allows him to...
If you give us, if you give, if you give us a moment, my, I anticipate that we'll be there within the half hour, within the half hour. Alright? So let's, uh, let's try to work through the, uh, agenda, and we'll be right back there. Okay? Alright.
Moving to a period of presentations, and I'm gonna calm down because this is a very important presentation.
And we'll take, and we'll take, we'll take Ms. Devine first. Alright.
And this is adding the presentation respectfully on the National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month, the Honorable Tamika Isaac Devine.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, um, this, uh, this year marks the fifth year that we are recognizing National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month. Um, we have, as, as a city, we're the only city that I know of in the South Carolina who's recognizing this month that gives an opportunity for parents who have lost a child through pregnancy or an infant to, um, have an opportunity to remember their children. And so I wanted to invite Kristi Bother, who is, um, the founder of Naomi Circle, which is a support group for, um, mothers to come forward. She always, um, has eloquent words for us. And then after Kristi comes forward, then we have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Kristi?
Thank you, Tamika. Mayor Benjamin and City Council members, thank you again for having me here for this fifth year. Um, this is actually my tenth Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Ten years ago tonight, I sat in the living room with a friend of mine, and we lit two candles. One for my daughter Naomi, who had passed away in my fourth month of pregnancy, six, six months before, and one for her baby that had passed away two months before that. Our losses were very different. She had lost her baby between six and eight weeks, and mine had been at almost nineteen weeks. But we grieved together, and we supported each other together because we had learned the difference between only and already. It's easy when you have a loss to compare yourself to other losses, to say, "Well, my baby was only six weeks," or "My baby was only eight weeks," or "I only had one loss and this person had two or three or more losses." But, um, I read an article recently that compared the only and said, "Instead of saying only, say already. My baby was already eight weeks. My baby was already twelve weeks. I had one loss. I have, I've had already two losses." Um, and so we supported each other even though our losses were different. And I've learned to do that in the last eight years or so of having Naomi Circle Support Group, that one of our rules of our meetings is we don't compare, and we don't apologize for tears. And so the babies that I'm remembering tonight, I had three that I lost around five weeks. They were only five weeks, but they had already, um, made an impact on my life. They had already changed my body chemistry. They had already had a DNA that if they had lived, probably would have resulted in the same curly blonde hair that my living children have. Another baby, Curia, was already eight weeks. She had already had had a heartbeat that I had seen twice, and I had already planned out her wedding. And my baby Naomi, that I lost at eighteen weeks, already had toenails and fingernails that I got to count when she was born sleeping. And so they are the babies that have impacted my life. And I know that there are so many. One in four pregnancies ends in a miscarriage, or a stillbirth, or a pregnancy loss, or an infant death. Um, and the same is true in our, our city just as well as across the nation. And so I want to thank you again for remembering our babies with us. Because even though it doesn't change anything, the recognition by our community is part of our healing process. It is part of our healing for the parents and for other family members that were left behind to grieve and to miss the children who left us too soon. So ten years ago, I lit a candle along with my friend. Last week in our Naomi Circle meeting for October, we lit one hundred candles. And those candles lit up the room even though it was dark. And they were for all the babies that were represented by the people who came, which was just a handful, but also for dozens and dozens of, um, other members and families and friends that had contacted me and said, "Would you light a candle to remember my baby?" And they gave us names. And sometimes they just said baby so-and-so. Um, but that baby's life still mattered, and those parents needed that comfort. And so I thank you for standing with us, for increasing awareness so that it is not so hard to say "I lost a baby" to say their names like it would have been twenty or thirty or forty years ago. I've given you each a candle, um, and I don't ask you to light it now in this room, but it is the custom on October fifteenth, and has been for many years, that we would light a candle around seven o'clock and let it burn for an hour in whatever time zone we're in. And by doing that, we send a wave of light around the world for twenty-four hours. And it is a reminder, not only that our babies are not forgotten, but that there is also healing and that there is hope in the future. And so I hope that you will take this candle home, and although you'll be here at seven o'clock, perhaps you can light it when you get home and remember our babies with us. And thank you again for not leaving us alone, but for standing alongside us as fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. So, Kristi, um, I want to read this, and then we'll make the presentation. Whereas Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month is a month of remembrance for pregnancy loss and infant deaths, which include but is not limited to miscarriage, stillbirth, SIDS, or the death of a newborn. And whereas, whereas nearly one in four women have experienced the loss of a baby in pregnancy. And whereas the loss of a baby remains a sad reality for many families and takes a serious toll on the health and well-being of families, as well as our community and the nation as a whole. And whereas even the shortest lives instill valuable, and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives should not be trivialized, trivialized. Excuse me. Whereas recognizing Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month will enable the citizens of Columbia to consider how they can meet the needs of bereaved mothers, fathers, and family members, and work to prevent the causes of these deaths. And whereas the city of Columbia appreciates the hard work from groups such as Naomi Circle that help parents who have experienced the loss of a baby in pregnancy or infancy. Now, therefore, on behalf of our Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin and all of members of Columbia City Council, we do hereby proclaim October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month in the great city of Columbia, and we urge all of our citizens to recognize and participate in its observance.
Mayor Benjamin, as you all take your seat, um, thank you for, um, allowing us to always have that moment and share that moment with you, Ms. Devine, and for all of the families impacted. I wanted to also take a moment as we were coming into council this evening. There are lots of wonderful events that have happened that always happen in the month of October, along with this remembrance. There's been the breast cancer awareness. There's been Fire Safety Prevention Parade. Our staff has done a phenomenal job of always being on point, whether it's public immediate relations, police, fire, public works. Um, Ms. Erica, our city clerk, and I don't ever have to worry, neither do any of you, that it's done right and done well and on time. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of them, and thank you, Ms. Devine, for always being a big part of Domestic Violence Awareness Month as well. Left that one out. All of you, um, our council members do a phenomenal job of recognizing the important things and keeping, um, those things on the forefront along with many other issues that you take leadership on, like homelessness, um, and public safety and balance, all of it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Red Ribbon Week, the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Let Mr. McDowell first. Go on to, um, item twenty-seven.
Yes, sir. Item, well, we're holding that item, I think.
He's holding it.
Mr. Mayor, item twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Yeah.
You're holding it twenty-seven. He's holding it.
Yes, sir. We'll move then, um, to...
Thank you for your energy, and thank you for all that you give to this city, and particularly our brothers and sisters who find themselves in tough situations. Thank you for your mentorship. There's a very special program that is scheduled for next month, and I wanted Lester to talk about that.
How's everyone doing? Pleasure to see everyone. This event that is being hosted November the 7th at Benedict College, it's a Second Chance Path to Redemption reentry conference. I think it may be one of the first that I know myself, as a founder of this organization, is going to be hosting here in Columbia. And it's on the heels of you all, the leadership that the City Council and the Mayor Benjamin have taken as far as creating a "Ban the Box" city and a second chance. So what I wanted to do on the heels of that is create this conference of empowerment for the men and women who have been impacted by a criminal offense, as well as educating their families, as well as the community, about the issues that we as a community have to continue to do to put in place in order for individuals to be successful in their transition process. And some of the services that we're going to be addressing, because we believe that there are many barriers in place for these individuals, we're going to be talking about pardoning, expungement applications, Medicaid application process, food stamp application process, housing, the DMV. We're going to be providing free clothing. We're going to be having barbers there. And the reason why I chose November the 7th, because I don't know if you all know, but November, the first, every first week in the month, individuals returning home from prison into the community of Columbia, South Carolina. So November the 7th is significant for this particular reason, so that these men and women who are coming home, I think it's about 486 individuals, are transitioning back in the community every month, and some of them will be right here in Columbia, South Carolina. So this conference is again, is for that particular day, for to help these men and women connect with the resources that are available. So that's why I mean like Medicaid, Medicaid opportunities, helping them connect with the SNAP benefits, free clothing, friendly felony employment opportunities for these men and women who are transitioning back in the community, whether they're coming home in the next week, or they have been home for now, for a period of time, and seeking employment. And with this, my intention is to provide lunch for the individuals, as well as we have, I'll pass all of these out. We have what, I created what is a resource booklet for all of the men and women who are going to attend this conference, and they have like everything from how to seek employment, housing, as I said, Medicaid, medical opportunity, medical resources available for them. So I'll pass these booklets out to you guys. And what I'm asking, hopefully, that you guys can assist us with, is that with this, I have, it's a nonprofit. We don't have any funds at this present time. So we have to print almost 150 of these particular things, booklets, for the men and women who are going to attend this conference, as well as we're intending to provide meals for these individuals who are going to be there as well. So I'm just asking the City Council to assist us with the funds, some funds, that will be able to assist us with this particular issue right here. And as I said, also, hopefully, we could receive a letter from the City Council speaking about the "Ban the Box" ordinance that has been passed, as well as, hopefully, some of you could be able to attend this event just to speak about the City of Columbia being a second chance, giving individuals an opportunity for employment and housing and education after their transition back into the community. I appreciate it, you guys. And I'll leave this, the booklets that you can get some more information on. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Lester.
Thank you, Lester.
Again, just a thank you for the work that you did, that you've done, using your life experiences to make sure that the city is now a national leader in the space of making sure that all of our citizens have an opportunity to do the great things we know we can do. Very proud, getting a lot of feedback from people all around the country, around our work around "Ban the Box," and our work around wage history. I mean, you've been leading the charge, and I think Patrick's in here somewhere too, and Teresa, our legal staff, just making sure we're doing it, doing it right, as well as reflecting in our procurement policies. So you've been doing amazing work.
Appreciate you. And like I said, this is on the heels of this right here. I think it's going to be important for the men and the women to know that Columbia is that second chance, and we're going to put the rubberwood in Mr. Road, and we're going to start educating and providing them with those resources, continue to lay that landscape.
And we'll talk more about your.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lester.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I am using a microphone, but I'll hold my head down a little bit closer to it for you. Item 26 is Red Ribbon Week. The Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Thank you. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse. And whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation, October 23rd to the 31st. And whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. And whereas the City of Columbia, South Carolina, further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Week, now therefore be it resolved, that City Council of Columbia, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23rd to the 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage all of our citizens to participate in drug prevention activities, drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we stand together. And I look up, and we stand together. All right, please. Thank you.
On behalf of the 81st Readiness Division.
Put your microphone down a little bit, a little closer to you.
On behalf of the 81st Readiness Division Substance Abuse Program, we'd like to thank you for your support in observing Red Ribbon Week. As adults, it is our responsibility to promote a drug-free habits for our school and at home. As our brothers-keepers, it is our job to educate our neighbors and our friends of the negative effects of using drugs. As leaders and public servants, it is also our job to promote drug-free examples for our citizens, our communities, and the United States on a reserve. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We take the picture together. Let's, we're going to do just two first readings, and then we'll come back to the public hearing after the appointments. And I want to get done as fast as we can. I have a, personally, not council, I have a hard stop at 7:15. I want to hear from as many of you as possible, so we're going to try to race through this.
Absolutely, Mayor. Moving into a period of ordinances, first reading, ordinance number 2019-081, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, the North Main Senior LLC, 3700 North Main Street and 3706 North Main Street.
Does that move? Does it move? Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Say nothing, move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
No.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Resolution, moving into that period, for one resolution number R. 2019-093, authorizing the city manager to execute a fifth lease amendment between the City of Columbia and First Citizens Bank and Trust Company for the lease of approximately 34,221 square feet of 1225 ladies' street.
Does that move? Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Resolution, moving into that period, for one resolution number R. 2019-093, authorizing the city manager to execute a fifth lease amendment between the City of Columbia and First Citizens Bank and Trust Company for the lease of approximately 34,221 square feet of 1225 ladies' street.
Does that move? Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Other matters, item 34, accommodations tax surplus. Ms. DeeDee Fanning, if you all have questions, Mr. Mayor, our grants coordinator and community projects liaison.
I have a motion, however, move that we direct a portion of the surplus ATAX being directed to the CVB towards completion of the wayfinding project per request made to City Council in spring 2019 for a cost share between the city and the CVB of the project act.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Duval.
The surplus will be split 85-15, like the initial distribution, and then the CVB will take the $100,000 out of that, their share of the 85%, right?
Yes, sir. Move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 35, council is asked to approve the installation of one-speed hump on Bryan Street as requested by the Public Works Department.
Does that move? Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of appointments, council is asked to make appointments for the Central Midlands Council of Governments Climate Protection Action.
Is there any other interests? If not, are we reappointing?
Does anybody have an interest? I will, I'm happy to be reappointed, but I know I can't, I can't make every meeting. And if someone else had an interest, I wanted to give them that opportunity, the third Thursday of each month.
Move it through, Mr. Mayor. Can you hold it till November?
Hold it, yeah.
All right.
Hold it till after the election.
We're just going to hold it till the next council meeting. All right? Motion was drawn. We'll hold it till the November meeting. Climate Protection Action Committee, I'm with the appointment of Zachary LaPreece. Are there any other appointees?
Yeah, I have one.
Three total seats.
Let's see. I move the approval of Mary Cothran.
All right, so one of the slot, we're going to hold that one unless someone has another recommendation.
Deborah Sterling, I saw her the other day. She's.
Move the appointments of Zachary LaPreece, Deborah Sterling, and Mary Cothran to the Climate Protection Action Committee. Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Municipal Election Commission, I move the appointment of Tyler Bailey Esquire.
Okay. Great. Second.
Discussion. Move the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
So thank you very much, Ashley.
You're welcome.
Great job. So we're going back to item 29?
Yes, sir. Asking council to open a public hearing, an ordinance second reading for ordinance number 2019-099, amending the 1998 Code of Ordnances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 6, to add vacant building registration. Mr. Hatcher, David Hatcher, is here to answer any questions council might have prior to opening, or as you open the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
If you all have some questions, David, I want to keep the presentation tight. We have at least three citizens who express interest. I'm not sure they're speaking or not. Want to make sure they have an opportunity to speak, so we can get to the other citizens who signed up to speak as well. So maybe amendments, the changes that have been made per direction of council.
Yes, sir. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Ms. Wilson, thank you for the opportunity to present this ordinance to you today. Since the June 4th, I've had an opportunity to meet with several stakeholders, several business organizations, several citizens of Columbia. And the ordinance before you today incorporates all those, all the feedback we got from all those meetings to the best we could. Obviously, it can't address everything, but I think, I feel confident that it addresses everything as best we could, and it still addresses the needs of the Code Enforcement Division. I don't know if you want me to go over the ordinance, or?
Maybe particularly the, some of the key amendments, particularly those regarding residential structures, ability to pay, I mean, some of those would be interesting.
David, would you also speak to the issue of eminent domain?
Yes, sir. Will do.
Would you also speak to the issue of hardship, that piece that is in the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
If you would speak specifically to those areas.
Okay. Yes, sir. Well, since our, since the last council meeting, some of the things that have come up, probably the biggest, the biggest key thing was the fee structure. Before, I had just one fee structure, fits all kind of thing. We did break it down by residential and non-residential, so there's a different fee structure for the residential, non-residential. The second biggest thing was, a lot of people were concerned that we, the city intends to take their property from them. That is not the case. And that's really, that's really my fault. In the first ordinance, I had a, had a reference to eminent domain, but that was for the extreme, in my head, I was thinking the extreme severe cases, but we've since taken it out, so nowhere in your, in this proposed ordinance before you today says eminent domain. That is not the city's intent. So that is gone. Another big issue was some of the neighborhoods, if they really can't afford, like the owners cannot afford to repair the buildings or pay the registration fee, there is a, there is an exemption for financial hardships. It's included in this version of the ordinance.
Thank you, David.
Those are the major things.
If we have another, other questions from council right now, David, did you have one?
I just had one, and it's really kind of for Gloria. I was wondering if someone does the financial hardship, and we have verified that there is a financial hardship, is there an ability for them to participate in the MAP program? Because that, that might allow some folks, if it's vacant, but they want to move back in, I'm thinking more residential. I think right now, that's not for vacant properties, but can, could we look at that?
Is the MAP program stood up right now? The MAP program, is it still? Okay.
My intent would be to follow the financial hardship guidelines that community development uses when they determine the median income guidelines and so forth.
Yeah, if we could just look at that, and if they meet the financial hardship, then maybe that could be a resource for them.
David, if you want to share some of that with us, so we can look at maybe ways to modify or integrate the program. We can certainly do that. Thank you.
David, okay. In addition to Ms. Devine's inquiry about the MAP program, in addition to that, what would help considerably is a proposal that we've talked about, of course, and that's fees collected be used in addition to perhaps the MAP program to help rehab some of the houses in terms of forgivable. That those fees be placed in an account that residents can get access to those fees and to those monies that is totally separate than, of course, our operational budget. So in addition to what Ms. Devine enquires about the MAP program, an appendix to that, of course, would be the fees, and we certainly would put that as a part of a proposal to the other colleagues on council to see whether or not that could be done.
Yes, sir.
Right. I want to move on. Mr. Bedura, please.
Just to make a couple of comments, I just want to say thank you for taking the time and going back to talk to community leaders and business leaders. I know the first reading we, we passed on this June 4th, that was almost four months ago, three months ago, so appreciate all the hard work you've done into this. The other question as in, when do you start implementing the program or the registration? Do you start right away? Are you going to send them a little welcoming letter or a little notice letter? How does, how does that process go?
Yes, sir. The proposal would be for it to be effective immediately. By definition, in the ordinance, a building is not vacant until after it's vacant for 120 days from the date the ordinance is in place, so we have 120 days to be, to get all our ducks in a row and get all the paperwork and everything together. What we do in. What we do intend to do is we're gonna take the buildings that we think are vacant based on our analysis, and we're gonna send them letters notifying the ordinances passed and that it may affect them and let them, give them proper contact information and so forth, so they'll know about it.
Okay. And the last comment I'm gonna make, congratulations on being mayor at Sunday.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, David.
Gotta say this about David, he left his honeymoon to come make sure he was here for this. I appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Bad, bad idea.
Worked so hard on this ordinance, I didn't want to miss the.
He's gonna see it all the way through, right? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Bad, bad idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. We have at least, this is a public hearing. Ms. Bruce, did you want to speak on the, on the item? Catherine Bruce? And clerk?
I don't have to introduce myself, but I will for the record. Catherine Bruce, I am a resident of Historic Waverly and also a candidate for Council District 2. And I do want to say to those who weren't here on June 4th, that we did talk about this, we did raise these concerns at that time. Since then, we've had the opportunity to talk to other community folks, we've examined a number of versions, each version that came out, we examined and had community discussion. We had a meeting with Mr. Hatcher, we had a second meeting with Mr. Hatcher and Mr. McDowell. Some of the things that are still concerning me that ask, that make me ask you to say no to this ordinance. One, basically what we're doing is we're criminalizing all vacant buildings. So a vacant building that is not violating any code is still going to be subject to being on the list, being examined, and possibly not in a equal fashion with other folks. You know, we did talk about a number of buildings that we know who the owners are that are still not secured. So we may or may not have equal, equal enforcement of these situations. We still have a $500 violation fee if you do not file, we have a $500 violation fee if you do not create a plan, which of course you have to make sure you have adequate engineering, architecture, understanding of those zones and codes in order to produce a plan, so that costs money. So we want to have, if we do this, I think we want to have money on the front end. We're talking about possibly using money from the MAP program, possibly, but that is not in the ordinance, as I read it. We also have the possibility of whether or not people are able to follow these rules losing their property, because there is, of course, a state law, even if you remove the eminent domain language from the document, of course, cities and municipalities still have the power to remove those properties from individuals, which would create an extension of the racial gap. We want people to keep their properties in their families, those who've been able to hold on some tentatively to a piece of property, we want them to be able to hold on to that property. So let's figure out how to do it that doesn't have this bludgeon effect, it doesn't have this possible impact where buildings are removed from individuals, new people may have the opportunity to develop them, but they may not be available to black and brown communities who live there, because the cost that has gone into that building may bring it out of the affordable housing situation. So I think we want to pull the reins, slow down, and take our time to come up with something that's going to adequately provide African-American, brown, black people, poor and low income, the opportunity to participate in developing these properties as opposed to what, we gotta hurry up and get with somebody who already has the money. So let's say no, that's my, that's my request.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. Thank you. On the same item. Ms. April Jones?
Hello, I'm April Jones, and I live in the Pinehurst neighborhood, which is off of Two Notch, right near Benedict Stadium. And I love the Pinehurst neighborhood, it's a wonderful neighborhood. And I'm here today because I am opposed to this new ordinance. I have had a direct and personal relationship with code enforcement, and I have found that they are not enforcing the law, they are not enforcing the codes that are already on the books. When myself and my mother and people in the community say, this house needs to be boarded up, they do nothing. Weeks go by and the house isn't boarded up. So that for me gives it, gives me a hard thought about giving them any more additional resources, because they are not handling the business that's already on, occurring. Secondarily, there is a green duplex on Schoolhouse Road, it's been declared a nuisance legally, the City of Columbia is supposed to shut it down for six months, and nothing has been done. Nothing. And also, this is under the purview of code enforcement, and they're not following the law, they're not following the code. And that also gives me second thoughts about saying yes to this ordinance. I think that the City of Columbia is a wonderful city, and I've talked to many people in our community, in Pinehurst and beyond. I've talked to business leaders, I've talked to community activists throughout the city, and every single person I've spoken to has said, no, this is not the ordinance for the City of Columbia. We are a capital city, we are trying to bring business, industry, young people, people from other parts of the country, and this is going to be a pux on our city. Businesses will not come, and this isn't my just personal opinion, this is what business experts have told me, businesses will not come, the tax burden is too high on the everyday person, 30% of our city is paying taxes, 70% is not, because they're nonprofits, there are other municipalities, there are schools, there are USC, there are colleges. This is not sustainable, and this is not going to push our city forward, it's going to bring us back, and that's why I say no.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Rebecca Parms.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Rebecca Parms, that's spelled P-A-R-M as in Mary, S. Person who just spoke, April Jones, is my daughter. We both live on Schoolhouse Road. I live in the White House, and adjacent to the right is a Pink House where she lives with her husband and 16-month-old son named Edward. I oppose this ordinance, this regulation vehemently with all my heart and strength. That's why I'm here today, to be vocal. Now, we asked many people to come, but they're afraid to come and speak before you because of the rudeness that has been exhibited. We, the people here in Columbia, we're taxpayers, we're law-abiding, we're faithful to the community, but I feel that this ordinance is not faithful to us. Mr. Hatcher indicated that he spoke to several citizens. That's not sufficient. He spoke to several citizens about changes. It's not sufficient, and no one asked him specifically, how many, where do the citizens live, what were their age, what were their race? Nothing. It appears to me that this is something that has not been seriously considered as far as the impact upon ordinary citizens who struggle every day to pay bills, put food on their table, pay rent, pay the car note, work, pay for child support, childcare, and now you're putting fees that are burdensome, and actually, in my opinion, the fees are not really fees, they're penalties. We need to move Columbia, South Carolina forward and be inclusive of all people, take the heart of a man who is faithful to the duty to represent all citizens. I've had contact with code enforcement, I have found them, the officers, to be rude, to be liars, not to be transparent, not to give me information, not to follow up on the calls that I made about tall grass, drug dealers and vacant houses. It's appalling. I have met with Mr. Hatcher, I have met with Mr. O'Neill, I've met with Mr. O'Neill in his office many times. I've met with Mr. Hatcher, he was not transparent, and the six units on the corner of Schoolhouse and Center by law has been declared a nuisance, and by law, the owner has to shut down the place for six months, because he did not have a permit for two years, and he pled guilty in a criminal court. But the police chief and Mr. Hatcher and Captain Roberts had a secret deal, backroom deal, that was not presented to the judge when the landlord pled guilty to a criminal offense, not having permits to rent those units on Schoolhouse and Center, and the judge was not apprised of any secret deal. And now the police chief, Mr. Hatcher, Captain Roberts tells me they're not shutting the six units down. They don't want to. But that lets me know code enforcement is not interested in doing their job shutting down drug houses, making sure that everyone abides by the law, that the landlord actually has a rental permit. They do backroom deals, let Gainwell Smith, the landlord, who is a criminal, let him continue to rent to these people who do not have jobs, they're drug dealers, prostitutes, they're not working, they're all day fighting, knife fights.
Thank you, Ms. Parms.
And I have been assaulted, and I need help. These people are criminals, they are harassing me, threatening me, knives, fight gunshots, and the chief promised me that he was working to shut the place down, and I turn around and he's telling me, no, I'm not shutting the place down.
Thank you, Ms. Parms.
And he's violating the law.
Thank you, Ms. Parms.
And I'm very angry.
Thank you, Ms. Parms. All right, any other? Any other questions of staff? Or not? I'm not sure if Mr. Hatcher's gone back to his honeymoon, getting that.
He's right there.
No, David, thank you so much for the hard work on this. I know just from the conversations I've had with a significant number of citizens from across the economic spectrum, across the city, residences, businesses, and the like, the amount of work and energy that's been put into this and the effort put into consensus building. So, so thank you. Now, we've got to make sure that as we execute on it, that we do it with a focus on equity and making sure that we're the creative approaches that, like what Ms. Devine just asked Ms. Said about, that we're being very aggressive in making sure that, that the end goal is what we're, we're trying to get to.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you for your work there. I move approval. Second. Any discussion? All right, with the previous question, Clark Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
There are no matters, no matters from the work session, I believe, Madam City Manager? Are there any reports or referrals to committee? Seeing none, Kate Bowie? Microphone's yours.
Is it okay if I address the benches in the Vista?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And everything, anything you want to talk about within the time limit is, is on the agenda now, so please.
I hope you all find me worthy of your time. I know you have a lot of things going on, but I hope you do. Prioritizing people over profit comes down to the matters of empathy, dignity, and respect. Out of sight, out of mind does not solve the problem that there are people without shelter in our city. Criminalizing homelessness further ostracizes and dehumanizes folks experiencing homelessness and expands class stratification based on access to capital. Folks experiencing homelessness are deserving members of the public and undeserving of the city's prioritization of appearances, tourism, and private property. Hiding homelessness instead of combating it only contributes to the further demonization of poor folks, and this willful segregation is only designed to exonerate house folks from responsibility and insulate them from witnessing poverty. The proposal to replace the benches in the Vista with benches redesigned to include dividers is an example of hostile architecture. This trend in urban design discourages use of public spaces by the already marginalized homeless community by denying access to public spaces, which we all have a right to regardless of socioeconomic status or ability. Having dividers in the benches shouts the message loud and clear to both homeless folks and disabled folks alike, you are not welcome here. It is an unkindness that is considered, designed, approved, funded, and executed with the explicit motive to exclude, harass, and disparage already marginalized populations. The ordinances that we have in place are also a matter of denying civil liberties from the First Amendment, the Fifth Amendment, and the Eighth Amendment. These ordinances are direct inhumane violations of these liberties, and I'm speaking about loitering, sleeping, having belongings with you. Today, this council, well, we, you guys already passed it, so, but I guess just to increase the capacity and power of the police, which in turn perpetuates the cycle of poverty. Criminalization of homelessness has proven to be ineffective. Misuse of police power to arrest people experiencing homelessness is a temporary intervention that only prolongs homelessness. Folks experiencing homelessness is a temporary, is they are arrested, incarcerated, and often cannot make bail and then return to the streets, still with nowhere to go, but now with potential criminal convictions. These convictions, no matter how minor, create even more barriers to obtaining critical public benefits, employment, and housing, violently perpetuating the cycle of poverty. And even though we have passed Ban the Box, that does not make them able to leave this state without taking these criminal convictions with them as well. It only gives them protection here from the same laws that are sending them to jail that we've made. So today, I ask that you all halt all anti-homelessness actions in the enforcement of harmful anti-homelessness ordinances. Take immediate steps to repeal these harmful ordinances. Return the benches without dividers to the Vista and remove all existing hostile architecture from the city, especially the benches with dividers at the bus stops. Create a paid advisory board of people who either currently experience or formerly experience homelessness to guide this council in their decision-making regarding directing, directly serving the homeless population. And lastly, we ask that this council take an intersectional approach to understanding the plight of all marginalized communities, especially that of people experiencing homelessness, and enact measures to further the training of all city employees, especially police, on compassion and inclusivity. We also encourage this council to reflect on its role in causing harm to our homeless population and actively seek to reconcile these damages through positive action for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Effie, Effie Francis, please.
Teresa. Thank you. Hi, my name is Effie Francis. I am a resident of Columbia, and I have lived here most of my life, and I'm here concerned about the approval of the city's purchase of 53 Chevrolet Tahos for the Columbia Police Department. I feel this taxpayer money could more appropriately be put towards our community through homeless support services. Mayor Benjamin, I know that in your State of the City address, you stressed the importance of celebrating diversity, promoting inclusivity, and challenging bias by protecting free speech and other constitutional rights, as well as reminding folks to feel compassion and empathy for those who have been mistreated and disenfranchised. And Councilman Duval, I know that you have expressed that the reduction in available mental health services is a huge factor in the issue of homelessness in our city, and we need to work in a coordinated way to address it. I want to reiterate what the previous speaker said about homelessness being an intersectional issue compounding with other forms of oppression. Anti-homelessness is ableist, meaning that it is discriminatory towards disabled people. Even transitions, the organization with the most resources and capacity to serve people experiencing homelessness have. This is but one example of ableism in homeless services in Columbia. Additionally, the removal of the benches in the Vista is incredibly ableist towards people experiencing homelessness and housed folks alike. Benches are necessary for people to be able to rest, especially in an area like the Vista, where parking is not ample and not always close to the destination. Having a place to sit and rest should be a courtesy for all people, but for, especially for people with physical disabilities, it is a necessity. According to guidelines from the Americans with Disabilities Act, benches are an important public accommodation for disabled people. Benches with dividers make using them impossible, difficult to an impossible for people who use wheelchairs, as well as cause issues for people who are visually disabled. With regards to the possibility that these benches will be replaced with benches including dividers, this is not only an example of hostile architecture that discourages the use of public goods, but is also an example of systemic ableism. The fact that millions of dollars will be discussed being spent on police vehicles today is largely a misappropriation of taxpayer money that could be better spent combating homelessness. Increasing the resources of the police contributes to the issue of the enforcement of the criminalization of people experiencing homelessness. People experiencing homelessness are a vulnerable population, forty percent of which are disabled, whether that be psychiatrically, physically, cognitively, intellectually, visually, or otherwise. And that vulnerability does not stop at interactions with the police. A 2016 report by the Ruderman Family Foundation found that up to half of the people killed by police across the country have a disability. Additionally, according to a database maintained by the Washington Post, in 2018 alone, at least 139 people with psychiatric disabilities have been shot and killed by police. So in closing, I encourage this council to not continue approving spending on increasing police power, and instead invest this money in serving our most marginalized, including folks experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of message consistency, we'll hear from John White, and then is Wallace Coger still here? Okay, Mr. Coger, you're next. Jonathan Davis? No, 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 you first.
Go ahead.
Please, come. Jonathan Davis, and then Michael Egbert.
So, hey, I'm a little, little tall for the microphone, but I, I first want to comment on that, I feel like the earlier initial trying to speak when it comes around to the spending lots of money on police, and how that's related to homelessness, is something that's not really being discussed here, but police and homelessness have direct correlations to each other. For an example, I've been homeless before, and I don't have a paper or anything, but I'm just going to say, the way that I became homeless, the first time that I became homeless, was totally, I was homeless three different periods, but I could not pay tickets, traffic tickets, actually. And I had to choose between losing my job as a delivery driver because of a $10, I mean, because of a 10 miles over traffic ticket, and then I could lose my job and pay that, keep my license, and lose my house, but I would also lose my job, or try to live out of my car, and then be able to maybe get a house again without losing my job. So, when we're talking about amping up the police budget and how much money we have, we're talking about not only them, because homelessness is effectively criminalized, I mean, every aspect of it. So, we're not only talking about their ability to harass and harm the homeless, but we're talking about their ability to create more homelessness. Not only that, but I imagine that there's not like a shortage of like police cars, right? Like, there's not like a massive shortage, but there is a massive shortage of funding for homeless people. We're talking about you spend 48 times more money on the police, and today, three times as much money is being spent on buying 2019 cars, which is not necessary. There is no need for a 2019 car to be driven around, not so much that it's three years of homeless spending. You know, that's three years on the most economically disenfranchised people. These people could be working and homeless, you know, eighty percent of Americans report nowadays, working paycheck to paycheck. Getting one ticket, they have to make that decision. If you work paycheck to paycheck, you could be there too with a medical issue, with a ticket, with, anything can happen, anything small, and you don't have a support system. You know, that's, these are directly connected issues, and they cannot be pretended to not be. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. White. And I apologize, I've got the part, I have to catch a flight, Mr. Coger, so if there's some issues that the other citizens have that need to be addressed, I'll be back tomorrow. Before I left, I did want to address several of the different points, and there were several real invalid points that some of you raised, and I don't want you to think, given short shrift. Obviously, one of the most important, if not maybe the most important, goal of the city is to make sure that we're a place where people can live, work, play, be safe. Public safety is a priority in the city. I would encourage you all to get involved in some of the things that we have here happening at the city. I believe that your voices can add significant value to our policymaking, to our programs, to our priorities in funding, some of the work we've been doing around, not just diversity, but inclusion, pushing to make sure that our values around equity are inculcated in our policymaking and our laws. We've been setting the pace. The Ban the Box is not just about Ban the Box or some philosophical idea. We are fundamentally changing the way that we do business, the way that we dispense public funds. There's a lot more that needs to be done to address homeless services by the city, but also by all of our multiple partners that we work with, but a lot of work needs to be done there. We're doing so much more around building affordable housing and low-income housing, around income volatility, some of the issues that you discussed. But there's a lot going on, and I would encourage you to add your voices to the chorus of solving some of these problems that are complex, that are certainly, there's real intersectionality between a number of the issues you raise, but challenges that have taken years to create will sometimes take a while and some thoughtful policy solutions to also fix. So add your voice to the chorus. When you come, come with the passion, and maybe even the ferocity and the anger as well, but always in the spirit of civility. We're here working on behalf of the people. This is your chamber. We want you to come and share your voices, but know that we're not here because there aren't 200 much more enjoyable things to be doing right now. We're here because we believe and work for the people, all right? So, thank you all. I'm going to pass the gavel to Mayor Protam and Mr. Duval.
Mr. Duval, can we, can we finish here in the folks, and then Mr. Coger?
Thank you all.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, I was asked to come here, I was asked to come here from Coger's Body Shop. We painted some helmets for the Cancer Society, and the City of Columbia asked me to paint them, and I painted them, but they never recognized it. I think it was 2016.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
I believe we were looking at doing a presentation to Prisma Health on November 19th. Whoever was communicating.
You had to sit through all this, Mr. Coger?
Yes.
Apologize.
No problem, no, no problem.
We'll do it right. We'll do it right on November 19th, okay?
November 19th.
Make sure y'all discuss. This is better than AMC and MSNBC right now.
It's all good.
God bless you, brother.
All right, y'all have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Coger, for coming. Jonathan Davis?
Here's the meeting we're gonna make today. It was my understanding I'd have the opportunity to speak here in support of the penny tax greenways, and if that's not the case, I'll yield my time.
I think that's more for county council.
Yeah, so county council's on Hampton Street.
Right, I think that's more for county council. They're discussing the penny tax, and we share your concern. Your concern is that they may remove the greenways from the penny tax. We share that concern, and we've communicated that, but maybe communicate with your county council member and let them know your position.
Very much, I yield my time.
Thank you.
You can go over to Harden Street tonight, because I believe they're meeting tonight.
Yeah, Harden and Hampton.
Michael Egbert? And are you the same, Mr. Egbert?
Harden Street.
Okay, thank you all for coming, we appreciate that. Mr. Duval, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment. There's one misconception that the group has mentioned tonight. The benches were not removed, the benches were moved about 100 feet up the hill. They're now on the corner of Washington and Lincoln instead of the corner of Lady and Lincoln. So that they are still the same number of benches, they've just been moved up the hill.
Thank you.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
In a recent article by WLTX, they interviewed you as well. You said they've been moved to the police station. So, but still moving them is removing them from the public space. And then I personally have talked to you on the phone numerous times, and you've sort of suggested the bench with dividers, but that's why we came here today, to tell you why that's not acceptable as far as ableism goes, as far as criminalizing homelessness. And I think that all of us here are very passionate, we've researched this, we stayed up all night, we're very passionate about this, like, to write this. So it was so important for us to be able to say this, and we wish that we'd have been able to finish speaking before, we really do, and hadn't been cut off because it really did tie back to it, as John said. But unacceptable benches with dividers, they shouldn't have ever been removed.
They don't have dividers on them, they're the same.
Right, they should be moved back, and I'm, thank you.
They're just right up the hill.
Thank you so much. And I would just say, as we close, I echo what the mayor has said, and I appreciate your passion, but there probably are a lot of things that we are doing that maybe y'all aren't aware of. One thing, we have a homeless court. You've talked about criminalization of homelessness. Our homeless court actually has been nationally recognized because we are moving people from homelessness to jobs, to housing. We do Housing First, which I think one of you talked about, the housing, moving people into housing. There are so many things that we are doing. Could we put more money in it? Yes, absolutely. But could we put more money in having the greenways so people can walk and enjoy their city? Can we put more money in, you know, what we're doing with community development to do more affordable housing? Yes. But what I would ask you guys to do is stay connected with us. We have, every year, we have a work session on homelessness, and we talk about all the things that we're doing. We take ideas of other things that we can do. So I know y'all are passionate, I appreciate, especially, we do, I think someone mentioned that, we do have people who are formerly homeless who have given us advice and who have participated in our work sessions. So I would just encourage you guys to stay engaged and continue to communicate with us. But thank you for coming, we really do appreciate you being here. All right, without that said, do we have a non-debatable motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, ma'am.
Could you come to the mic, please?
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate it. And I do have a lot of appreciation for the efforts that the city does to serve our, to serve a population of people experiencing homelessness. But posing the question about like, where the money would come from, that the money could go to a lot of different wonderful things that could really serve the city, and that's where I was trying to draw back in when I was speaking earlier about, like, where would this money come from? Like, y'all just approved $3.3 million on Chevy Tahos. Like, that's three years' worth of what, that's three years' worth of what is budgeted for all, like, houseless services in the city. And my main question, and my main question is that, like, what are we doing to address homelessness in concern to what is this council's plan to address and change the anti-homeless ordinances that we have on the books?
And I would just echo, I would just repeat that we have a work session every year on homelessness. We talk, I mean, we spend hours talking about it. So I would just encourage you guys to come back and talk, and I will be happy to talk with you about all the things we're doing. I think Missy can probably tell you all the things we're doing, that homeless services, that million dollars, that's Housing First, and Transitions, and the winter shelter. It doesn't include the other things that we're doing, but I appreciate what you've said, we can, I just encourage you guys to come back. And then I think Daniel wanted to address the Tahos.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're all talking apples to apples. The budget's already been passed, what we did tonight was just appropriate the money that was already in the budget for that. We didn't add money to the police. This was budgeted, it was a public hearing, went through the process, we did that. There are 67 homeless providers in our community, and we work with most of them, we fund a whole lot of different programs in the city, and, you know, we've worked with everybody from Fast Forward, who does a training program for over 20 years, we just had her celebration here. So there's a lot going on.
Homeless no more.
Doesn't mean that we have all the answers and that we've finished everything, and I think what you've heard both from the mayor and Ms. Devine is that there's other things that we can do and encourage, it's a community-wide issue. You've mentioned several times about what you call anti-homeless. I think it would be helpful for us to know what you believe those ordinances are, and let's have a discussion about it. We are all open to it, we all have our emails, our cell phones online. This isn't the only forum to have that discussion, and I encourage y'all to reach out.
So, for the benefit of the public, every year when we do pass a budget, just a re-education at times, which I'm happy to do and have those conversations too, about where specific pots of money, how things are allocated. The money for police vehicles and other public infrastructure needs in our city comes from capital leasing for this particular, that is not something that legally you can use to fund homelessness. It's a one-time fund that you keep referencing, the $3 million, but I would also remind you that this council's taken leadership over many years, over a million dollars every single year, reoccurring funds towards homelessness. So if we do the math, there's been much more spent towards homelessness than focusing on a one-time funding need of our city to balance everything we're talking about for public safety of our city. So I'm happy to talk about how the budget really works, because there's a big difference in how we fund what you're referencing versus the general fund, taxpayer dollars, that has gone towards homeless needs for many, many years, over a million dollars. So we're well more funding homeless services than we have been the police department, police vehicles in the recent years.
But again, I encourage you guys to just come back and stay engaged. I think what Ms., I just want to echo what Ms. Wilson is saying regarding the budget. We have a public hearing on our budget, and be honest with you, hardly anybody, excuse me, ma'am, can I finish speaking, please? But actually, we're allowing her to speak when normally we let you speak one time for three minutes and that's it. We're staying here.
Didn't get to speak one time for three minutes.
We're staying here.
Spoke for like a minute and a half.
No, ma'am, the buzzer went off, so you spoke for three minutes. It might not have sounded like three minutes, but it was three minutes. But all I'm asking is that, just again, stay engaged with us, because this isn't a one-time conversation, and I'd be happy to meet with you guys to talk about, you know, what we're doing and what we can do more. I mean, we're asking you to stay, you know, give us some examples of what you're talking about. We've heard about the benches, we'll address that, but staying, going back and forth all night is really not productive. So, go ahead and finish your thought, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I know that there was a note made about like what ordinances I'm talking about. What disappoints me is that I already said it, and I feel like y'all perhaps weren't listening to what I was saying earlier, but that there are specific ordinances-
work, and I'm saying that like our ordinances are equally as embarrassing as the plan that was released in 2013.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, is there a non-debatable motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to a second, Ms. Hammond.
Call the roll, quick.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Have a good evening.